Good evening. It is Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. We are at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, Minnesota. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the land of the Medawaketon Dakota people. Medawaketon means dweller of Spirit Lake. Our first item on the agenda is roll call. Dana?
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
Eric Tesmer.
Here.
Pat Driscoll is absent. Melinda Dolez is absent. Simi Petnek.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
2.0 Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.0 is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Moved by Sharon, seconded by Eric. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. 4.0 election of officers. At this time, we will elect school board officers for 2025, starting with nominations for Chair, Vice Chair, Clerk, and Treasurer.
I would like to make a motion for a slate of officers as follows. Katie Schwartz as Chair, Simi Petnek as Vice Chair, Melinda Dolez as Clerk, and myself as Treasurer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Simi. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. On to 5.0, and this is our organizational items for 2025. These are similar to our...
Consent.
Consent items? Thank you, Julie. Consent items. So we will just approve all these by a single motion, and I have not heard from anybody that they'd like to discuss any of these. So can I get a motion to approve our organizational items?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Simi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That is it for our business meeting. We do will now adjourn the business meeting, and we will start our workshop meeting immediately after, so 7.0 is adjournment. Okay, so it is still Thursday, January 2nd at 2025. It is now 6:04 PM. We are still at the District Service Center in Cottage Grove, and we'll now start our workshop meeting. We do have to, again, do roll call, Pledge of Allegiance, and Approval of Agenda, so we will repeat all of those things. So 1.0 Approval of Agenda, or Roll Call. Dana?
Ryan Clark.
Here.
Sharon Van Leer.
Here.
Eric Tesmer.
Here.
Pat Driscoll, Melinda Dolez are absent. Simi Petnek.
Here.
Katie Schwartz.
Here.
Okay, 2.0, please stand again for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.0 Approval of the Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Sharon, seconded by Simi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we'll move on to 4.0, our workshop items. 4.1 is Teaching and Learning Report for Math, and it will be introduced by Kelly Chanson, Assistant Superintendent.
I've been called worse, Katie. Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm here to introduce tonight's math report, provided by members of our Teaching and Learning Services, or TLS Department. As you recall, in December, you heard about our progress toward the goals set forth in our Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness and A&amp;I Achievement and Integration Plans. And tonight, we are here to provide additional details on the strategies and supports employed in K-12 mathematics. While we could probably make a case this aligns to each of the five strategic directions, I think you'll note this particular alignment tonight to student experience, mastery of learning and expectations, and student pathways and systemic supports. And with that, I will turn it over to the department, knowing they are going to introduce themselves.
All right, good evening. I am Arthur Williams. I am the Director of Teaching and Learning for Elementary Schools. It's nice to be here to report on K-12 math. For tonight's Teaching and Learning Report, when you look at the screen, you see we're going to talk about data. We're going to look at elementary and secondary teaching and learning. We are going to look at our CERC process, or that is, our Standards and Instruction Review Cycle. And then we'll talk a little bit about elementary, secondary, and then we will provide an opportunity for you to ask any questions that you have.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark McMillan, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. Thank you for your time this evening. We are going to jump right in and start talking about some data, and we're going to anchor our conversations in some performance measures. We know that our teachers are collecting data on student performance every single day in instruction, and it extends beyond these four basic measurements. But we also know that this is a really important accountability piece for our district. So we'd like to take a look at each one of these and what they mean. First of all, I'd like to focus on the definitions of criteria reference and adaptive. There are different types of assessments that help us measure growth or help us measure progress towards standards. So here's what adaptive means. Adaptive really means that if a student is taking an assessment and they get an incorrect answer, that next question really becomes a bit easier, and it's adjusted. And the test has the ability to do that. If they get a correct answer, that next question becomes more rigorous, until there's a steady level of performance found and a rhythm and a cadence within that assessment. A criterion reference assessment is really measured against standards, pre-established criteria. So as we look at the four that we're going to talk about tonight, we have the MCA. It would be a criteria reference assessment. We have our MAP, or our NWEA is what it's usually referred to as well. Our pre-ACT, it's a CRA, and then our American College Testing, our ACT, the 11th grade level. So those are the four different assessments that we're going to look at in terms of performance measurements, and we're going to take you through K-12.
So we begin our data journey with MCAs, or the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment. And on this screen, you can see our overall district-wide proficiency, 53.7%. It also shows the proficiency by level, so elementary, middle school, and high school. And below that, you will see grades 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 11. Oftentimes, we are asked how we compare to other districts. Other districts that we like to include are Elk River, they're at 62.1%, Lakeville, 58.3%, Osseo, 43.8%, and Rochester, 41.8%. This next slide shows you our participation rates, starting in the year 2019. If you remember, in 2020, there were no MCAs given due to the pandemic. And in 2021, that's when we, as a district, were in our hybrid year. As you can see, for elementary, our levels have sustained back up to the 98th and 99th percentiles for participation rates, as well as the high 90s for middle school.
So I'm sure you see a dip in participation at the high school level, and I just wanted to address that. And I can only lean into my own experience as a high school principal, but I believe that was, at the time, when you see this dip here, it's very consistent with what other school districts around the state were experiencing. Just a couple of things. Remember, like my colleague Arthur said here, we were in hybrid learning in 2021. There was an increased awareness, and probably a very good thing, increased awareness of students and families knowing the opt-out process, better communication around that around the same time. To be upfront with you, the student perception data, in terms of students, we have data where we've found that students wonder about the relevancy, and do they see the connection to it when they know that it isn't a graduation requirement? And then test fatigue is often talked about, in terms of the numbers of standardized tests that students have experienced by this point in their educational career. And if you think about the other timing of ACT and SAT and AP college testing, it's a lot. And so by no means are those excuses, but there may be some influences as to why we see lower numbers at the high school level.
And as we take a look at our elementary data for grades 3, 4, and 5, you can see as grades 3, 4, and 5, they were just under 61% proficiency. But when you take a look at the individual grade levels, we can see that there is a little dip with the 5th grade math standards, and math scores, excuse me. And as we look at our standards, that's when the math standards become complex and the rigor of the state standards change, so students can be prepared for middle school. And it's something that we, in elementary TLS, are really working with our 5th grade teachers on by looking at the scope and sequence, the planning, and our resource.
And as you can see, the proficiency rates at the secondary level are lower than that of elementary. In my understanding, not having been in this district at the time, but in 2018, we adopted a core resources, a resource of bridges, which was a rush to put in a core resource that really supported students in teaching and learning differently. And we're going to use, and you'll see this through my colleague Ian Bronson here momentarily, the adoption of the 2022 math standards as a catalyst for adopting a core resource at the secondary level that we would fully expect to see a level of achievement increase on MCAs in the years to come. So we're excited at that opportunity and challenge at the same time.
All right, now we are going to move into our MAP, our NWEA data. Where it says proficiency, that should really say percentage norms, because when we look at our next slide, we have grades 3, 4, and 5 percentage norms. But when you look at this graph, on the left-hand side, that is the percentage of students, and our MAP scores are in four categories, five categories, excuse me. We have our high, our high average, our average, our low average, and our low. Our high average and high category are those 61% and above, average 41 to 60%. But when you take a look at 2024, if you add 26.6 and 27, you can see that 53.6% of our students are scoring in the high and high average category. And when we look at our MCA data, that aligns well with our MCA data. The students that score in the high and high average typically do well on our MCAs. Then we take a look specifically at grades 3, 4, and 5 on the next slide. You can see the same thing for 2024. When you add them up, we have 23, excuse me, 53.6% of our 3rd, 4th, and 5th graders are in the high and high average category. On the next slide, we have our 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade fall-to-fall projected growth. So what this means, if in 2023, I was a 3rd grade student and I scored a 212, let's say that's the 99th percentile for my RIT score, and I had a projected growth of 12. As a 4th grader at the beginning of this year, I take the MAP and I score a 209, although that's still in the 99th, or excuse me, 95th percentile, it's still high. I did not meet my growth, so I would fall into the does-not-meet. And we see that some with our students that score really high. So we want to make sure they're continuing to grow, but I don't want you to be misled by that number of like, oh, 42.7% of our kids aren't meeting growth. It's because of the projected growth from the year before. So we have some kids that score so high, they don't keep that. So even if they score in the 98th percentile the next year, it still counts them as does-not-meet growth.
Okay, Arthur did a nice job of explaining what each one of these tests are, explaining the RIT score, et cetera. Our goal is to increase the percentage of students that are in the high-high average, and we're trending in the right direction here. If you add up the high and high average, in 2022, we were 49.8%. In 2023, we were 52%. And in 2024, the math adds up to 53.7%. As we move forward and look at the projected growth for 6, 7, and 8, we're trending in the right direction, 2024 being the highest percentage of students meeting their growth target over the past three years. And then we'd like to take a look at the pre-ACT. Going on to the next slide. So these are, this is an assessment, a performance assessment for our 10th grade students. Our 10th grade students take this just before MEA. And we don't really have solid comparison data for other districts, because not every district requires us or offers us to their students. So it's a little bit more difficult to compare it to other districts. But you can see that we're trending in the right direction in this past year, with a 9% increase over 23, 24 scores of students that are meeting their benchmarks. Moving ahead to ACT, this is a little bit lengthier explanation here. First of all, I would point out that some would argue that the math portion of the ACT is the most rigorous portion of the ACT in terms of benchmarks. 22 is the benchmark score. When we're talking about the rigor, we're really talking about freshman college-level mathematics. So we're talking about STEM majors, pre-med. It is rigorous. So we're slightly above state average. Over the past three years, like we reported on the pre-ACT, in 2022, we were 41%. 2023, we were 40%, and in 2024, 42%. We can't draw a direct line between the cohort that took the pre-ACT as 10th graders and this 42% you're seeing here, because it also involves some 12th grade scores. But the bulk of those 11th grade students would have been in that 10th grade cohort that achieved at 32% meeting the benchmarks. So while we can't say that that whole cohort was the same group of students, we can say that there is a high volume of those students that showed and demonstrated growth from 32 to 42%. And you may be wondering, similar to what Arthur said, is how do we compare to other school districts? We, Lakeville, in comparison to the class of 2024, they were 43% met that benchmark. Elk River, their students, 42%. Suasko, we were 42%. Anoka was 31%, and Osseo was 27%. If you include all of the eight districts that we've been referred to in terms of our size, the last two years, we've been third of eight districts, just to give you sort of a broader comparison.
Now we are going to take a look into elementary math, or what elementary math looks like in our classrooms. And to do that, it is my honor to welcome and introduce Laura Larson. She is our K-5 TLS Supervisor. And prior to this role, she served as instructional coach and teacher at Valley Crossing. So Laura.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to paint a picture for you of what elementary math looks like in a synopsis. And then we've got some nice video clips for you to kind of see students in action. So really with our elementary math, as it was referred to earlier, we did have a core resource adoption of bridges. And that was in the 1819 school year for our K-2 students and teachers. And then we know what happened with 3, 5, and 1920, the world sort of fell apart. So our 3rd through 5th grade teachers and students really had a disjointed implementation of this resource. And so what we've done with that first bullet point, we just really wanted to highlight that in Teaching and Learning. We've really been grounding ourselves in reorienting what the resource does and how it aligns to our standards, as well as everything that it offers all of our students. We've been working really hard to make sure, coming out of the pandemic, that our teachers really feel equipped to use this resource with our standards. The next part about our resource bridges, that's wonderful for our elementary students, is there are three components. We have Number Corner, which focuses on the daily calendar. It allows students to have collaboration, interpret patterns, and track skills across the year. It's a spiraled approach, so they'll often come back to some of those mathematical concepts throughout the year. And then we have our Problems and Investigations, where students are, this would be what you'd probably consider the traditional lesson, or the mathematical concept that is being taught for the day. Very interactive. Students are able to collaborate with one another, solve real-world problems, come together to collaborate and solve. And then our third component is Workplaces. That leads us into the next bullet point. That is games, activities, anything to reinforce the mathematical concepts that were presented in those Problems and Investigations are there for students to play in a gamified way. We also have a supplemental resource called Dreambox. It is a digital-based resource that is used in conjunction with our core resource. That really provides a personalized path. It really adapts to the student. And so wherever they are at, it kind of gears up or gears down. It is, does not depend the grade level. It moves to where the student is. So it's a beautiful thing for both intervention, but also enrichment for our students. And then the final point for elementary math is we are back into looking very heavily at data, and we've got a lot of things we can look at. Our MAP data for grades 2 through 5 is super helpful for us to set some goals at the beginning of the year to help guide our instruction and ultimate performance on those MCAs. And then our resource does have embedded assessments with pre- and post-assessments and several other sources of data. But there's a nice snapshot, I think I'll let Arthur take over here, of what this looks like in action.
So Laura did a beautiful job of explaining what elementary math looks like. She talked about the grounding, the strong unit planning, the solid core instruction. And we have a two-minute video clip. In this short video, you are going to get a snippet or glance into recent math lessons in a 2nd grade classroom at Nuevo's Fronteras and 5th grade at Liberty Ridge. It showcases Senora Bradner and Mr. Hanslick and their students in small and whole group instruction and student engagement. The first part opens in Spanish, and there's a question. I have it translated here, so you can know what these students are answering for their teacher.
Okay, so una mano, un dedo. So, abian extraterrestre.
Ay.
So these are all ones.
Excellent.
We don't need this.
Okay.
I need to redo this.
Yes, pero uno, tres puntos.
Vamos a hacer diez, veinte.
Hacer veinte o puede hacer dos saltas de decenas. Sí, entonces, un salta.
Visualize eight basketballs in the center of a court. Go with me, Stan. Split them in half. Split the half in half. That's a quarter of the eight basketballs. So sometimes just visualizing that inside your mind can simplify things.
Because I'm not going, or I don't want to go higher, I want to go lower.
So this is the thing that Mr. Rooney and I have been talking about all the time. If we multiply a number by one, the number stays the same. If we multiply it by something over, one gets bigger. If you multiply by something smaller than one, it gets smaller. And that's really what we're dealing with. Sometimes if you're given a problem like this, some kids find it easier to think in fractions. Some kids don't. So it's okay. Either way is okay. School is about understanding your own mind and what works for you, right? So going forward.
So as you can see, that was just a very short snippet of what happens or things that can take place in the elementary classroom.
And what's nice about our resource and what we know about good math instruction is it's a good balance of both whole group discussion, working with small groups, and then individualized instruction. So it's a really nice balance throughout the day of what it looks like.
And all of our elementary classrooms have math, 60 to 80 minutes a day. So if we were to be able to watch the entire video of, say, Mr. Hanslick class, the kids were up and moving later on as the lesson went on, but wanted to provide you with just a snapshot of some of the things that take place.
So now we're going to get a chance to look at secondary math. It's my pleasure to introduce our secondary TLS Supervisor, Ian Bronson, who oversees the CERC process with our teams. Ian, you may or may not know, was a teacher, instructional coach, principal, and he brings those skills into his work with our teachers. So thank you, Ian, for taking us through secondary math.
All right, thanks, Mark, and thanks for having us come in and talk to you about math. We're really at an exciting place in secondary math. You saw elementary is a little ahead. They have a core resource. And secondary is at that spot where, as Mark alluded to, we just are adopting now in Minnesota the 2022 math standards. And so we're really looking at really three aspects to think about here. One, we have incredibly great work going on in a lot of our math classrooms throughout our district. And that's, teachers are using a variety of approaches. They're differentiating for their students. They're trying to meet their students where they're at. We also recognize that it's since 2007, that's about a 15 or 18-year gap, since we've had an opportunity to reengage in what the math standards are in Minnesota. For perspective, most of our seniors were babies, right? And so if you think about, it's their entire lifetime since we've had an opportunity to do that. So that's really interesting. Third point to bring up is, we have a lot of teachers that are already jumping in and looking at the 2022 math standards. And we've seen that in our classrooms, where they're approaching the new math standards already, even though we're still testing on the MCAs on the 2007 standards. They're engaged in that new work of, what are the new math standards saying? And we're seeing that as we go through, Mark mentioned the CERC process, which is the Standards and Instruction Review Cycle. And so we're really working with our teachers in that process right now. We'll jump to the next one. So the Minnesota Math Standards, just as a refresher, right, it's really a long process. It's a couple of years for the Minnesota Department of Education to develop those with experts in the field. They pass the baton off to us, which is where we're at right now. And we say, hey, what do the new standards say? How do we want to engage instructional practices? And that takes, it gives us an opportunity for a couple of years to figure out how are we going to implement those standards? And that's where we're at right now with our teachers, preparing for great math instruction with our students.
One of the key focuses that is explicitly called out in these 2022 math standards are, is this idea of mathematical rigor. We know that we're still recovering, and we're amping up rigor. And what's nice to see in these standards is it's really called out with an equal intensity of those three legs on the stool. So mathematical rigor is really made up of real-world application, conceptual understanding, and procedural skills influency. And we've done a really great job with procedural skills influency, with memorization, with rope memorization. And we're really beefing up that conceptual understanding, which is really just a strong grasp of a concept and the ability to transfer it across different areas within mathematics. And so it's a key point within these new standards that with our CERC team, we've been focusing heavily this year on, on what does it look like to ask deep questions and think with rigor?
So just understanding the shifts, and Laura alluded to this a little bit. You saw that in the video with students up at whiteboards, working. The idea is we're moving from acquiring math knowledge. It's more of a memorization. For example, what is the slope-line-intercept form? It's y equals mx or mx plus b, right? And then, and we're actually moving towards mathematical understanding, which gives us a chance to look at more real-life programs, right, real-life problems. For example, the number of spokes on a bicycle, how can we graph that to know how many spokes on the to know how many spokes on the next spoke? So that we understand the rotations of the pedals to rotations of the wheel. That's actually a slope line intercept form, but allows students to think of mathematical practices, or excuse me, mathematical thinking, that then they can transfer knowledge to other systems. Part of what the new standards do is they develop math practices and benchmarks contexts. And that'll, those are the lenses at which we look at the new standards. And we'll talk a little bit about those as we move forward.
And some other shifts we've been looking at with our leadership team this year is just the idea that our strand structure has changed pretty dramatically from four strands down to three. So number and operation and algebra is sort of snuck into that patterns and relationship strand. You can find a lot of those ideas in conceptual understanding within that strand. You'll see that geometry and measurement is not called out explicitly anymore, it's more within spatial reasoning. So we're doing very similar, math isn't changed, it's just phrased differently or grouped differently to be integrated more easily into how students think and work. One key point is that data and probability strand was not found in our kindergarten through second-grade standards in the last iteration. It now goes all the way down to kindergarten, which is really exciting. We know that our society in general is just moving in a data-rich society. So we are really looking at equipping kids from early on in understanding how to use data, how to collect data, and how to read it. Another key point are those seven anchor standards that come out in the 2022 standards. The last time around, they were grade-dependent, this time around, they're K-12. And then the number of benchmarks, I'll let you see that. But elementary, we've got our work cut out for us because we have a lot more with that addition of data and probability. So our teachers are busily learning all those new additions that are going to help guide us.
All right, so the next three slides, what we're really looking at is just an exemplar of the different strands. And so this is the data and probability strand, and we just have an exemplar of what that might look like. So our teachers look at that and then use this as they begin to look at what are the specific learning targets? What are the ICANN statements for our students? You'll notice when we look at the benchmarks, which is really where teachers go for what they need to teach in the classroom, you'll see it called out that MP3, which is a mathematical practice three. And that mathematical practice three is going to be the, excuse me, let me look down here, construct, construct variable arguments. And then also you'll see symbols there, and those call out specific benchmark contexts. Minnesota Tribal Nonsense context, financial literacy context, computer science. And then real world, real world context is that little star or sun picture there. So we'll just jump through the next couple of slides. The next one just looks at spatial reasoning. Again, there's, you know, several hundred, three hundred and so standards, excuse me, benchmarks. And so those, these are just a couple of examples of what we're talking about when we talk about the standards and benchmarks. And then the next anchor, next anchor standard or strand is going to be patterns and relationships. Those are just a couple exemplars, so we can look at what we're talking about there. And finally, this is looking at the implementation timeline. So elementary has a jump ahead of us, they're already looking at their core resource. We look at if, if you looked at Mark and Arthur's slides, they were talking about the MCA threes. The MCA fours are coming, which is what we want to prepare for. So we backwards map when we need to implement new core resources and standards in our school. And so we're right at that twenty-four, twenty-five where we're going through that Standards and Instruction Review Cycle, so we'll be ready to implement beginning next year.
And elementary's in the same spot. We're also working on the same timeline of pulling that team together, and we'll be right on track with secondary. We just have the advantage of having a resource that we have been able to use up until this point. All right, we'll take you through the elementary CERC process and what this actually looks like in, in practice. Last spring, there was an all-call for teachers who were interested in being a part of this, this team. It was open to teachers of any kind, administrators of any kind, anyone's welcome to join. In fact, the more voices and representation is better. So we established that team last spring, we started meeting this fall. We really start at the beginning of these meetings, grounding ourselves in what are the shifts in the standards? What is the state asking us to look at? And so that's where we went through that mathematical rigor, looking at the eight mathematical practices and benchmark contexts that the state calls out for us in those new standards. Studied the shifts in the, and some of our grade-level standards and where things have moved around with the emphasis in elementary of that data standard moving down. And then that last step that we've moved through with the last meeting that we just worked through was moving from that benchmark, so those examples we just showed you, teachers will take those benchmarks and look closely at the language, especially the verbs that are called out in that language to what is it really asking us as teachers to be able to bring to our students and make sure that they understand? So those ultimately result in ICANN statements that are student-friendly, so students know what it is that they are learning for that day. Next steps for elementary, we have two more full-day meetings this year that we'll be going through. We will be looking at our prioritized benchmarks. So that's looking at those benchmarks that we want to make sure show up on progress reports, that, progress reports, excuse me, so that families are informed about what it is that we are doing in mathematics. Continuing to look at our data, to look at our resources. Our core resource is one that we will be using as we go through our evaluation rubric when we are looking at different resources for mathematics. And then we will ultimately start looking at next year and begin planning what does that look like once we've chosen a resource that fits our best need for these new standards? How can we build that out for teachers for easy implementation?
All right, so now we're jumping back over to the secondary side. And really, this mirrors what elementary does, right? I mean, we're really in the same boat of what's going to be the best instructional opportunity for our students in our classrooms. And so we really want to provide that opportunity for teachers to wrestle through what the standards are, how do they compare to what we have been teaching? And so that's what we're doing here, we're looking for what stays the same and what, what shifts do we move towards so that we can best teach our students? Jump to the next slide. One of the things we have teachers do is really ask, like, what do you see the hurdles are going to be as we implement new standards? And what are the benefits? And then we go back and answer those questions with our colleagues to really provide that opportunity to say, how do we leverage the great things we are already doing in our classrooms? And we have a lot of great things that are going on there. And then how do we address potential barriers that might exist for either our students or for our teachers as we think about teaching to the new benchmarks? Then what we do is, so we move from the standards and we start looking at instructional practices. And we say, we develop the Teaching and Learning Services Rubric, which really looks at how do we want to evaluate any potential resource that will support what we want to do in the classroom? We develop priorities for what those instructional practices will be. And that's that I in CERC, Standards and Instruction, so I want to do instruction. And then we begin to think about what do we want to do in our classrooms? And what resource might be available for us to support that work in the classroom? And then this is other work that we have done. We want to include the voices of all of our math teachers. And so we provide a survey for them to kick back information for our CERC team to say, hey, what do we need to do in our classrooms? We also follow what Laura was saying in elementary, which is looking at unpacking the benchmarks and writing those ICANN statements that are specifically used for what we want to teach students in the classroom. And then finally, the work that we are going to have in the secondary, because we're cognizant of subs in the building, we do half-days instead of full-days. And so we have a couple of half-days coming up. And then that will result at the end of saying, what resource do we want to put in front of our students that will best meet the needs of our students? And really, we start to look at what are interventions, what are extensions there? And how can we do that currently, right now in our middle schools? We're trying a couple of things. We have Math 180 there, which if you might have heard, Read 180, it's a similar program that really looks at adapting to where the students are at. And so that's part of that process now of saying, that's a resource that we use now as an intervention. And will that be something that we want to carry forward as we move, move along? And all of this will be put through the lens of our criteria based on a rubric. So we're making really informed decisions about what potential curriculum we want to put in front of our students. There we go, I think we move to questions next.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions? I have a question. I have a question. Okay, actually, I have one. One of the questions I had, you talked about high school and the number of high school students dropping out of testing for the MCAs. Do we know who is dropping out, like demographically or what? Like, do they have any characteristics in common?
Yeah, so I have not done that, that type of research to break that number down. I'm sorry.
That is curiosity that I have, as we look at that number, to break that number down. I have not done that, that breakdown. But I can certainly follow up with, because it, because I'm curious about it as well.
That'd be great to know. And then for the, for the ACT, is that just based off of that A test for the ACT or is this maybe the highest for every? Is it the highest?
It's actually, it's actually the most recent test. Yeah, yeah, that's a good question. Does everybody understand that piece? Is it's eleventh graders and twelfth graders? And if you take it three times, it's your most recent that goes into our score, yeah.
Okay, and do we, do we use other? Like, I know in elementary for reading, there's that ERLA that teachers use as the, as sort of like an iterative benchmark, right? Do we use, do we have anything like that for the high, for the, sorry, for math? Where there are other sort of, like, because the math is once a year, right? Or, and then the MCA is once a year, but is there sort of like these, like a?
Unit test?
Yeah, or like, is that it, just the unit test?
Yeah, our core resource bridges does include pre-tests and post-tests and a lot of checkpoints in between. And so there's a whole lot of data that elementary teachers are able to collect along the way.
Do we know, and the answer can be no for this, but do we know how students, how ready students are or how, if they're hitting benchmarks according to those? How many students are hitting benchmarks according to those types of tests as opposed to the MCAs or the math tests? Like, for the ERLA, it was like seventy-ish percent or seventy-five, eighty percent of students were creating at or above grade level, but the MCA said it was closer to fifty percent. So is there something similar for math?
Map, I would say. So we have, we, we also have middle school map data. We don't have, we don't have map, NWA map data for high school, but the middle school map data would be the internal assessment that we've chosen to use as that fall, winter, spring kind of barometer. So I don't know that we test all students in the winter, but we test some, I think.
Okay. And then one question I did have about the map, as you mentioned, there's high average, or sorry, high, high average, average, low average, low rate. Is the average then, is that considered some, a child who's getting grade level benchmarks? Is that how you can read average? Or what are, what does each of the? How can I contextualize each of the, each of the measures?
Yeah, so for the high and high average, those are one of the things I failed to mention when going through this. These are how our students do compare nationally to, with other students that take the math map. Because a two-twelve is a two-twelve, it doesn't matter when a student earns that score. Yeah, that, does that help?
It's not a measure against an academic standard, that is what it is. So that is the measure of where we fall within all of those that take the map, math. So it's not a measure of like, the, MCA is a measure of the Minnesota standards. This is a measure of math standards compared, but they're not the Minnesota standards.
Okay, so this is a nationwide?
Correct.
Okay. And so if I'm looking at this, you know, so in each grade, you mentioned two-twelve is the ninety, like?
That was just, I was just.
Right, for, for one of the grades, right? And so when this says high, high or high average, that is the equivalent? So, you know, you could be a second or a third grader and get two-twelve, or a fourth grader and get two-twelve, or a fifth grader, and so that has been, that is accounted for?
Yeah, so like as a second grader, I could get two-twelve and that might be high. But if I'm a sixth grader and I get two-twelve, that would put me maybe in the low-average category. Because as Kelly said, that's, you know, two-twelves are two-twelves and it's comparing against everyone in the nation taking the map.
And then with the, you also mentioned in elementary, kids are doing sixty to eighty minutes of math per day. Is that in one session?
Some classrooms have it broken up, because as Laura explained, the different components of bridges. So you have number corner, we have whole group instruction, we have workplaces. I know there are some, like when I was at Middleton, for example, some of our grade-level teams would have number corner be part of morning meeting. So they would, that would be about fifteen minutes of the math time. And then they would move into during their math time, that's when they would have the whole group or small group. So teachers do have the flexibility, especially with like number corner or workplaces, to incorporate that at any part throughout the day.
Okay. And then in terms of adopting the 2022, I realize my notes are kind of all over the place, sorry. In terms of adopting the 2022 standards, are there any like big items that have shifted from 2007 and then, you know, either being added or being, being taken out of the standards?
So that's a great question. And the simple answer is it's, it's very similar, right? Really, it's more about the approach that we use to teach. So instead of teaching math in isolated facts, where I'm going to ask you to memorize a bunch of facts and next week we're going to do a test, and you're just going to spit those facts back, and then we're going to move on to something new. Right now, it's like, I want to teach you how to think through ma, like a mathematical literacy. And so that's where those, those benchmark contexts come into place. That's where the mathematical practice comes, comes into place. So the standards aren't calling out specifically geometry at the anchor standards. It'll end up being more like the benchmarks here and there. But it's more of a holistic approach of we want a narrative approach to math, collaborative approach to math, instead of just that memorization. So that's, that's, I think, the biggest shift that has occurred. And that'll be a shift for some of our teachers also in how to approach teaching.
And then again, at the elementary level, that focus on data, all the way down to kindergarten, is a big shift. It's new. It's not that we haven't looked at data and had kids collect data, they've been doing that for years. It's just how are we using it within the context of the math classroom to connect to other things that they might be doing in their day, like science or social studies? How does that all connect?
I wonder, Sam, if you're asking it based in, I think the last time we had a shift in math, it was algebra's moving down to eighth grade type of, yeah. Like, is a requirement of graduation moving to a different grade level?
So the graduation requirements haven't changed. We still need to go through Algebra II, Algebra I is still in eighth grade, those are still the same?
Okay. Yeah. It's your opportunity, I happened to read an article today about eighth-grade algebra in Minnesota. It talked about my Facebook media, I wish I could say it was intellectual, look for it. But they talked about how students were statewide, it hasn't led to more students ending up taking calculus versus when the standards were, were added, right? And one of the things they talked about is that by moving into eighth grade, we've seen some students get into high school and then struggle mathematically because they were not developmentally ready for, for Algebra I in eighth grade. So what are we doing to ensure that those kids are part of the, that they don't, they're not left behind or left out as part of these new standards? Or as we're designing our math curriculum?
That's a, it's a really good question. And one of the, to be transparent, one of the struggles we have is most of the nation doesn't have eighth, or Algebra I in eighth grade. They have Algebra I in ninth grade. Where a lot of researchers would say, students are cognitively more ready for that abstract thinking when they hit ninth grade. They're just a little too young sometimes in eighth grade. I think, you know, there's a lot of good for people saying we need to expose our kids to things early so they adapt, you know, adopt to that, adapt. But it is a challenge when we look at curriculum also that supports our learning. And so really, we are leaning into, and really the MTSS approach is saying, we want to prioritize a specific standard and then ask our PLC teams to look at how do we best address those students who are not meeting that yet? And so I would say that the structure we have in place right now is going to benefit our math teachers also. So that they have a, a structure in their professional learning communities with their fellow colleagues to say, how do we figure that out? Some of the work we're doing in CERC is also some of that. We see that the standard's this, the benchmark says this. We know that some of our students are going to struggle with learning and absorbing that. And so how do we build classroom practice that naturally helps those students? What I would say, between the bells, right? Instead of you have to come in after school, but how do we do it right now in the classroom?
And then there are students who take Algebra I in sixth, sixth and seventh grade as well. How are those, is that determined from their math scores or MCA scores or?
We have a really detailed math placement process for fifth grade that involves our talent development department, there's data review. that involves our talent development department, there's data review, and then there's teacher recommendation, and then there's also opportunities for parents to say, I think you misplaced my child, can we please take a look at this again? So it's all of those things that happen in that fifth grade process that go into where they go in sixth grade. And I think we've also done a good job of saying, because you're here in sixth grade, you're not going to end up here as a junior. You know, we've worked on developing those on-ramps and off-ramps for students for acceleration of math, so that if they're one year accelerated, or two years accelerated, and they're not being successful, we have a safety net that can catch them, and it's not just, you know, you're going to get Cs in math for the rest of, you know, your high school career, because you're on this path and you got to stay on this path. So I think we've worked hard on that in terms of making sure kids are ready. And then, you know, there are very few cases where parents say, I, I want them there anyway. And then we have lots of conversations like, okay, and here's what you can expect. And generally, we are pretty right on where, on placement. And so I think that that, over the last three years, has become really important to make that decision based on data versus emotion and, but they won't get to a certain place, and so just trying to dispel those, you know, rumors that they can't reach calculus if they're not in Algebra in seventh grade.
Okay. Um, and then, I think this is my last question. For the secondary, so secondary standards for Minnesota will end with Algebra II, correct? There's no, there's no benchmarks for trig or calculus or anything like that, right? So I know that when you get to the high schools, there are, you know, you can take Algebra III, you can take, you can take calculus. So those classes all exist outside of these math standards? So will those classes, or how will those classes be affected by the new new standards?
In many ways, they shouldn't be, right? Because students will still progress through their, their math progression at the same rate. And then they will still have that opportunity to take whatever further math class they want to, after they complete Algebra II. So that, that really shouldn't change the dynamic there.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Um, thank you all. I do, my only comment is, I would have, um, that was a lot of great information. I would have loved to see a little bit more, like when you talked about number corner and some do it in morning meeting, maybe some of the differences in some videos of how it's being taught in different ways, so that we can really see what is going on in those classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, team.
Okay, on to five point O, and that will be information item. We do have one, no, we have two this evening. Five point one is our audit for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. That will be introduced by Chris Blackford, Director of Business.
So good evening, everybody. I always tell people that to be an accountant, you just have to add, subtract, multiply, divide. But I'm telling you that after hearing about the math, I'm really glad they do accounting and not just straight math teaching. Because I don't think I would be very good at it. So with me this evening is Aaron Nielsen, please introduce him with our audit firm of MMKR. He's a principal there, and in charge of our audit every year. And he's here to present information relating to the annual audit of the district for our fiscal year ended June thirtieth of twenty-four. And so again, received an unmodified or clean opinion, and full sets are out online in the PDFs as well. Simi, yes, you may have a hard copy. If any other board member would like one, please let us know. And again, we did apply for the certificate, certificate of excellence program again, this year award. And that will, if, uh, we received our eighteenth consecutive award last year. So exciting always for us to receive that. And then at next board meeting, we'll put forth for board acceptance of the audit reports. I will also qualify, by the way, that I apologize for my sound effects this evening. I did receive a wonderful holiday gift of a cold, and I think Aaron is a little one-two, but he is not coughing like I am. So I do have one more cough drop left. But with that, I will turn it over to Aaron.
Great, well, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. And a good start to the year, actually, when you see your audit results. So it's nice to get to have a presentation like this to start off. I'd love to say they're all going to go this smoothly and have the same results, but that can't always be the case. But we're pleased to report, we did complete the audit process. As you know, it's a very long and rigorous process for completing that and getting through that. Chris has mentioned a lot of the details with regard to the act for that comprehensive, or annual comprehensive financial report. And so I put together the PowerPoints, so not to surprise anybody, but it's just some of the graphs we've taken out of the management report, trying to keep us on the same page. If there's anything you want to address in the reports, I'm happy to try to answer them at the end. So with that, I will start right away with the first slide we presented. So our audit results for this past year, we've issued what is known as an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements, or a clean opinion on the basic financial statements. As I'm sure Chris and her staff are getting very accustomed to, every year it seems like we're adding a new audit standard or a change with regard to the requirements. So we do have, again, an emphasis of a matter paragraph on just changes in, it was capital asset accounting this year, and groups of similar assets that may together exceed the capitalization threshold, but individually would not. And now they're saying they would like to see those capitalized as groups of assets, groups of similar assets. With regard to the internal control and compliance for the financial audits, so that's under auditing standards, you're required for a couple of reasons. The federal single audit requires your audit to be under government auditing standards, and the state of Minnesota requires our school districts to be under government auditing standards. So as you can see, I've noted there, we had no material weaknesses in the internal controls, and we had no instances of non-compliance to report for you. I think the, the button you can see I added is that stressing that internal controls need to be constantly monitored, updated as, you know, times and things change, how you receive payments, and how the areas shift and where you're collecting resources. And the last couple of areas that we discussed from the, an audit opinion or reporting standpoint is the single audit of your federal awards. We've issued what is known as a clean opinion on the CIFA, or the schedule of expenditures of federal awards. You can see we noted we had no material weaknesses or instances of non-compliance on the major programs that were tested this past year. And then the last component there is the Minnesota legal compliance audit. So for the Office of the State Auditor's Legal Compliance Manual, there's seven broad categories, and inside each one, there's many tests that we have to complete, or make sure you're following. And we're pleased to report there were no instances of non-compliance. So, um, you know, really from an audit standpoint, we're looking for instances of compliance in reportable components, and we had none to report for you this past year. So really pleased with the results of the audit and our testing for twenty-three, twenty-four. The rest of my slides that I have here are just to share information out of the financial statements, put together by information of your staff, and I'm sure they've got a lot more details than I would have on that to share with you. But I'll hit some highlights and then we can go from there. We include the slide here for adjusted ADM, or average daily membership, as a measure of the students you're serving on a daily basis, to show you the size of the organization. The funding really does follow the number of students you're serving. You can see this past year, the current estimate at the moment was about nineteen thousand and nine students. For twenty twenty-four, that represented an increase of about two hundred and thirty-nine, or one point three percent over the prior year number of students that you served. On the next slide, we show your size of the, well, financial position, or trends of the organization. So we pick some of the key components to look at for showing how the organization has changed over the past ten-year period. Really what this shows me is improved financial position. You can see the size of the organization has also grown. So we do, in that circumstance, want to see your cash and fund balance equity levels increase in a similar proportion over the size of the organization, because it'll take more equity cash balances to operate on a day-to-day basis as the size of the organization changes. Diving into a little more detail of the general fund, so I've got several slides for the general fund as your primary operating fund. So the slide I have before you here is the general fund financial position for the past five years, looking at the components of equity, non-spendable or resources that are still able to be used by the organization, inventory prepaid items. But you've basically dedicated how you're going to use those resources for the purpose that was purchased before the end of the year. The restricted category really captures the dollars that you're holding at your end that came with specific requirements on how to utilize them. Long-term facilities maintenance, operating capital, basic skills dollars. And then everything else falls into the, one of the categories of unrestricted fund balance. So committed fund balance is designated by your highest level of governance, or in your case, the school board sets those dollars, creates those categories. They also have to be selected before the end of the year. You can't wait till find out, oh, we had a good year, we want to commit dollars. That decision has to be made before the end of the fiscal year for an organization. Assigning dollars can be made by the school board, but you've also delegated that authority to your superintendent and other areas to be able to make those assignments. And that can be made after the end of the year, when you find out where your financial results land. Sometimes some popular ones end up being, if you had a planned project, it didn't go because of timing, you might assign them. In your case, you've generally used it when, in almost a requirement that's written into the standard, when you adopt a budget or your deficit spending for the following year. So that's what's making up yours in large part, is when you've adopted that budget, saying, okay, you're now operating in the next year and you're actually halfway through it now. We can't consider all of that fund balance available for us, because we're operating with those dollars anticipated to be spent already. And then everything else falls into that unassigned category. So, um, really what I want to point out with this slide, you'll see some fund balance percentage calculations, and we, we're calculating them based on total expenditures of the general fund, which is how we do it for all of our districts for consistency. Your fund balance is written as a manner to match the state's calculation of the SOD calculation. So they use operating expenditures, so they back off some of the long-term facilities maintenance one time. So expenditures, operating capital. And so with regard to your fund balance policy, you had a goal to meet sixteen point six percent, and that goal was to be met by the end of twenty twenty-six fiscal year. And we're pleased to report that you hit that goal, actually, a couple of years early with this fiscal year's audit. So I think you ended, well, I know you ended at seventeen point two percent by that calculation done by the MDE. So I'm pleased to see you've gotten to that, and I, I know it's a challenge to, you know, build that fund balance to get to that point. So it takes a lot of hard work and difficult decisions to be able to do that. A couple more slides with the general fund. The slide I show you here is for the revenues focusing on the primary sources of the funding that comes to the general fund, so you can educate your students of the district. You can see that focus on state sources making up a majority of those resources. This past year, accounting for seventy point six percent, followed by property taxes at twenty-four point two percent. And then you can see the balance in federal sources, which get a lot of attention because of the single audit requirements of two percent of the general fund. And then the other category is the fees, it includes investment earnings. So for your district, the total revenues this past year amounted to three hundred and seventeen point six million dollars. You came in over budget by about three point one percent, and was a, about eleven percent increase, or eleven, twelve percent increase over the prior year. So the increase is driven by the number of students you serve this past year, some enhancements to funding with regard to the formula allowance, a four percent increase. You also received additional state funding. The state made a, uh, effort to help provide cross-subsidy funding to help offset that cross-subsidy deficit that existed. So, um, on the favorable side for the budget, as I would say, coming in better than anticipated, I would attribute that largely to conservative budgeting for other sources. Investment earnings can be very challenging, and really I'm kind of saying the same message I've been giving all season, and I got a few more of these to go. So seeing a favorable variance with investment earnings. Conservative budgeting with state sources and some moves the district was able to take advantage of with dollars and how you utilize your federal funds for tuition billing. So a couple of positive resources there, which will impact my next slide when we look at the expenditures. So a similar slide to the revenues, looking at budget to actual, to prior year comparison. This past year, total expenditures amounted to three hundred and eleven point one million dollars, coming in slightly over budget by one point five percent, and about eleven percent over the prior year. Usually I get nervous when you're over budget in the expense side. I always say the favorable on revenues, and then we want to be under budget. But it's a little deceiving this year with your, your revenue, or expenditures coming in over budget, because the tuition move that was made is really the driver in why your purchase services were over budget, which was offset by a favorable variance in your special ed revenues this past year, state sources, so offset. And then I would say the other component of that is capital expenditures that you can see are over budget. In the MDE's reporting of leases, when you issue a new lease and guidance for leases, we have to report that as upfront to other financing sources. But in the UFRS manual, they net as one offsetting the other as an expense code. So when we present it on the audit, then you're over expenses, but you're over budget in other financing sources, but offsetting each other, so really a net neutral for both of those cases. So if you factored both of those, you would be under budget in total for your general fund. So the other component I like to share is, as you can see, the salaries and employee benefits make up a majority of the spending for general fund to educate the students. This past year for your organization was seventy-five point six percent. Not unusual, right in that range we see for school districts. And, you know, not, not to make a pun with it, but when you're dealing with your budgets, it's, becomes very personal, you know? So it falls right in that light range where it's difficult decisions for them. I've got just a couple more slides. The other governmental funds, we're capturing the operating funds here. You've got a couple others that I'll mention. The other operating funds for your district, the food service special revenue fund, seeing an improved financial position this past year. That fund balance ended the year at forty-three point nine percent. And the total expenses in that fund is about twelve point five million dollars. I'll just share the community service fund. You can see your, well, not by this slide, but the total expenses for the community service fund was about sixteen point to eight million dollars this past year. So that's why we, we only use one slide showing the components of the equity for these two funds compared to the over three hundred million you have for your operating fund. Really not uncommon what we've seen this past year with the food service operations. It was again another change in how it was funded in twenty twenty-four, and now the state providing free meals for all districts. So seeing an increase in participation, favorable operating results. So difficult to anticipate how that would impact your organizations. So you can see that change this past year. The community service special revenue fund, you can see, has been running pretty lean for many years for the district. This past year, ending at two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, or about one point five percent. And the comment I would share with you there, and I think I've noted it in the management report, is you, within the community service fund, you also have splits of the various buckets of resources for community ed funding, early childhoods, school readiness, community service, community education. So you, when you look at overall, you have a positive fund balance of two fifty-four, but you have certain buckets that are in a deficit position. So I will share, your district was one of the first ones where I saw that and was actively aware of that situation, because the importance of getting the students into the classrooms and, and the early childhood. So I'm not saying it's a bad thing, or a, you know, a positive thing, but it'll become one of those situations where how are we going to finance that deficit moving forward? So really a planning issue, so you're not keeping spending those into a deficit position, because you'll have to afford it in some manner, the general fund, or work with your legislators, if there's going to be more funding specifically for that, so. My next slide's the last slide, but I did want to make a couple of comments to, you know, give you a full transparency. The reports this past year, the capital project fund, as you were well aware on the board, you're starting to see the resources come in there, you're going to have a lot of activity going on there this, this year, issuing the bonds, or half of the bonds approximately of the bond issue. You had some facility maintenance bond activity going on in the construction fund, or we know as Fund Six. In your debt service fund, the district doing some good things with some refunding bonds that are going to allow your district to save some resources to taxpayers with the refunding bonds that were issued this past year. And then another area that changed that you may have noticed is the internal service fund. So we've been talking about those for several years, and, and this year, making that change to close the internal service funds and account for those now largely in the general fund, and then entity-wide financial. and then entity-wide financial statements. So with that, I'll make one last comment on the entity-wide, and, and we can answer any questions or comments there. To this point, we've been talking about the individual funds on a current financial resources, what's available for you to spend in the classrooms and programming. So that focus on the modified accrual is really looking at dollars that you have available to you, current spendable resources. So it doesn't capture long-term assets, the buildings, the infrastructure for the organization or long-term obligations, the bonds, the pension obligations of the entity-wide financial statements. So you can see, we talked about a lot of good things on the current financial resources, the long-term view we get out of the entity-wide financial statements, pulling in those capital assets, consolidating all the funds, and then also grabbing the long-term obligations. So we talked on the individual funds, most of the funds seeing an increase over the prior year. Then we look at the net position on a long-term perspective, and you can see you also are reporting an increase there. The net investment in capital assets has a lot of that increase. So while it's a good thing, it's meaning you're paying down your outstanding debt on the obligations, the organization, at a faster pace than you're depreciating your buildings, which is common. The bonds are generally 20-ish years, you're using your buildings for 40-plus years and sometimes well beyond that. The restricted component, you can see an increase this past year. I had noted a couple of areas for that was the debt service fund we talked about, so restricted for debt service. And then the food service was the other larger component that saw an increase in restricted. And then everything else falls to unrestricted. So one other thing I'll say with the net investment in capital assets, it's great to see it increase, but it doesn't mean you have $26 million more to put into programming because it's tied up in the buildings. But seeing the increase in unrestricted, a couple of factors there. It's that improved fund balance of the general fund and the other funds we talked about, and then the change in the pension obligations. And I'll hedge on that one a little bit on the pension obligations because it can go the other way, but it doesn't mean you did anything wrong. It's just how the market impacted PERA and TRA on a statewide basis, and you've continued to meet your obligations and the required deposits for your pension and have met that. So you can, that one gets a little conceiving or deceiving in presenting that because you could see a decrease when the general fund had a good year sometimes, just because of how the market impacted and the timing of when you report that. So I do want to thank your staff. I know there's always new things to be implementing. They're very prepared when we come for the audit, which we appreciate, and I know they put a lot of work into it, and so going through that is a big process and involves a lot of departments because you get the federal audit in there, now we get people that really don't care for accounting as much as they would rather be spending it with students. So with that, I appreciate the chance to be here, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
So just so I know, this last slide, the district-wide statement of net position, this is like the school district equipment of like a balance sheet in a ten K?
Yes, I would, I would agree. Everything pulled together.
Okay. And so you mentioned at the outset that there is an economic change, capitalizing groups of similar, similar items in a group or whatever. So what would an example of that be?
Drum roll, please. Tech devices. So our capitalization threshold is, you know, we raised to 25,000 per item, 5,000 per item for federal fixed assets. So when we buy an iPad, right, or a teacher laptop, right, those individually wouldn't be eligible to be capitalized. Under the new standard, however, now we have to group like assets. And so we might have purchased, you know, 1,500 teacher devices, and now where we used to not capitalize them, now we have to capitalize them.
And so how is this then different from, because I, I assume we were leasing, we lease a lot of our tech equipment, right? So how is this different from how we, the capitalization of leases or it's not?
For, for the assets you've purchased under lease, it isn't since we had to implement the new lease standard because we were required to put an asset on and offset it with the lease liability. I actually think that might have been one of the driving factors to tweak that question because districts that would not lease, they may not capitalize it, so it'd be kind of a different treatment of those assets. So for ones that you buy outright, you only have the asset on your books, no obligation. But if you were leasing everything, you wouldn't have noticed a change.
Okay. And then earlier you had mentioned, or you were, which slide is this? Slide five, I think? So you talk about cash investments, net of borrowing, and the unrestricted fund balance. So is the cash investments net of borrowing, is that like cash on hand on June 30th?
Yes, and the net of borrowing is not really that pertinent to you because the only borrowing you have is kind of the timing of that draw from the trust fund. Some districts, and it really goes back because I don't, can't remember all 10 years for all my districts, when districts had to cash flow borrow using aid anticipation certificates, it became much more important to share that. And so that, really the net, but that's, that's looking at your cash, and the general fund has a June 30th in, in investments.
Okay. And so then the delta between the top of the blue line and the top of the yellow line is restricted, is cash that is already made committed?
The difference, yeah, a little bit, it's a little deceiving from a standpoint of cash and investments at year-end, and we're, so it's a point in time at June 30th. I'm only grabbing your unrestricted, so it's not a total fund balance. And then the other factor that has a play in that for school districts in Minnesota, your property taxes are paid on, were paid on a calendar basis, but you've received half of the cash by June 30th, but we haven't put it into your fund balance, haven't recognized any of that revenue. So there's an offsetting unearned or it's a deferred inflow, taxes levied for subsequent years. So you've collected some of the money for next year that you were anticipating.
So when do we, so property taxes are due in May, right?
Yep.
And then the county gives us the money in June?
So.
Or?
So we actually, Washington County has a program that they provide advances on our property taxes. So typically in late May and early June, because they roughly know what collections are at that point, that they provide two advances to us, and then they have a true-up in Ju-, early July that we receive kind of the true-up calculation for the, what we were due for that May 15th collection. Similarly, in the fall, we receive, so like in November, late November, early December, we receive that, kind of the advances, and then we receive a true-up in January for that fall collection date.
So then do you recognize the money at the true-up point, or do we recognize it at the time we?
Oh, Simi, we could have lots of conversations about how to reconcile taxes. So as we talk, when we levy taxes, right, that we're always levying and we, it's not actually revenue until that year following. So in '25, the taxes levied and that we receive aren't actually revenue until '26 for us. And so we claim them as like a, as Erin was, so think almost like a liability, like if, because if we went out, we'd have to pay it back to the county, right, because we went to burn it.
Okay. No, that makes so much sense. Okay.
Maybe one comment I can add with that. What makes school districts different than cities governments, we're, as taxpayers, we're on the same calendar year basis, but when I do my city presentations, they will generally have a fund balance policy of 50% because their year-end balance, they haven't collected any taxes in advance. So they've got to have enough equity to basically operate the first half of the year and before they collect any of their tax payments. So that, like, school pay '25 is for '26. City will start their year without any of that revenue from taxes until halfway through. So that, that's just a difference in that timing.
Fifty percent, that's a lot of, that's a big fund balance. And then lastly, just, you know, our federal dollars went down by 50% from two years ago to this year. Is that just like a COVID hangover?
Absolutely. And so Erin and I were actually looking at it, and I said probably two, well, I said 25 now, so three years ago, I put together some information at that time. And I think out of the, all the districts in the state, we received like the, I think only 32 districts received less on a per pupil basis than we did. And so, you know, we certainly received still a significant amount, but comparatively not a lot for our size. And so that, you know, again, as those ebbed and flowed and some came with county money as well, and we had to spend real fast. I think one time we had two weeks to spend, like seven, $3 million, I think, so maybe three weeks, it's the fastest I've ever spent money in my life. Felt like it was at the store where you're like, what else, what do we need? You know, and it was in a really challenging time for our staff, so it was helpful to make those choices. But we did try to very much be mindful one-time monies and not have tails with those dollars either.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm so excited about this, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Erin. We will move on to 5.22, and that is our first, first reading of proposed policy changes, and that will be presented by Julie Wilson.
Good evening, and thank you. This evening I am bringing forth four policies as part of our regular policy review. As customary, our board policy committee has reviewed these policies. I believe that occurred in early December or maybe later November. It feels like a long time ago. So this evening we are bringing forward four policies. 101, legal status of the school board, just updates the legal references. 101.1, made for the school district. We have just added So Wash Co. We know that when we see a report like Erin's, it says, still says District 833. Our former communications director might have a word with you, but we know that we are number 833. We are South Washington County Schools, but we also are referred to as So Wash Co. So we're adding that into the policy. 102, equal opportunity education. Additional language is added as per MSBA, the model policy and statute. And 103, complaints, students, employees, parents, other persons. There is one update to one of the cross-references as noted in your packet. So with that, it is just information tonight, so I would just open up if anyone has any questions.
Okay. Seeing none, Dana, do we have?
Yeah.
Any other? No? Okay, then we will bring these forward at our January 16 meeting for results.
Fabulous, thank you.
Okay, on to 6.0, reports and comments, Julie?
I don't know about the rest of you, but there's some vent up here, and I am like chronically shaking for the viewing public. I don't normally sit here and shake. It is just so cold, my nose is mostly frozen. I was going to ask someone to go get my jacket. Just a couple of things as we open the new year. Welcome back to all of our staff. It was a great day to come back. It's a little bit of an ease-in. Today was a workshop day for teachers, so there was the opportunity, I think most of our schools had the opportunity to meet and have a short staff meeting along with time to begin planning and thinking forward to the new school year. Tomorrow, there is our continued professional development around our, with literacy across the entire district. And then on Monday, we welcome students back. I'm sure on Monday, there'll probably be some snowstorm, and people will wonder like, why isn't she canceling school again? We did run into that a little bit prior to break. Also, just to remind individuals that this is the time of year where we roll things over. So we roll over already in our systems to the '25, '26 school year. We begin to look at new kindergarten students who will be enrolling. It's the opportunity for student registration, and from now through March, we begin the whole staffing process. So you'll be hearing a lot of conversations, and of course, with those conversations of registrations and staffing, we also begin to talk about and set that new budget that Chris will be presenting as a first read, I think, in May, and then a final read into June. What's that, Chris?
It's all in June.
It's all in June. Okay, so first read into preliminary and then all the way to the final. And so with that, we're excited to be back and looking forward to great 2025.
Please take the kids back.
Thank you, Julie. Any board members have any upcoming events on any of their committees? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 7.0, and that is our future meeting date. January 16th will be a school board work, no, business meeting, business meeting at the District Service Center at 6:00 p.m. And then February 6th will be our school board workshop meeting, also here at the District Service Center at 6:00 p.m. With that, 8.0, and we are adjourned.
A little bit, yeah. It's kind of crazy cold, but definitely a little cold, yeah.